This is our regular salary board and board commissioners meetings, July 20th, like 23:00, 23:00 AM. So with salary board meeting. The board will call members present please.
Commissioner Eichberger. Commissioner Foshee. I'm here. Commissioner D. Flippo.
Present.
Control the whip, Tom.
Here. Right. We're starting three. Opportunity for public comment in regards to salary board issues. Any yes? No one on line? Okay, now move us on to item four, the approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 6th.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
If she cares. Okay, bring some item five. Salary board actions.
I'll make a motion to approve the salary board actions.
I'll second.
Seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, any additional business to come for salary? Notice we'll entertain a motion for adjournment. All right, we stand adjourned, moves us to the board commissioners meeting. Yes, so it's standing. Join us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All board, the meeting of the board commissioners, and the roll call members present, please.
Commissioner Eichberger. Commissioner Foshee. I'm here. Commissioner D. Flippo.
Present.
Okay, moves this item three, which is public comment on any non-agenda items. Of course, you can address comment to agenda items when they're addressed. Is anything additional? Do we have anyone online? All right, not, uh, which is to consent agenda, turn that over to the CFO.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, agenda items four through nine are contained within the consent agenda. This is a list of routine items that do not appear to be controversial in nature and which do not seem to require any additional discussion. If anybody wishes to have discussion on any of these agenda items, a request now would be appropriate. Hearing them and seeing them, commissioners, I would request approval of consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, so moved to seconded, just no further questions, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, the next section of the agenda is the regular agenda. These are non-routine items, and they will be discussed and acted upon individually. And the first agenda item is a discussion and approval of a letter of support for the new Cumberland Borough Streetscape Safety Improvement DCED Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant. And we have Valerie Gopmanever on Zoom to discuss. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, so you all, um, did you receive, good morning commissioners? Did you receive the executive summary? So we're looking, uh, you know, we completed our community identity and downtown master plan. Um, that was adopted in March 2023. And now we'd like to complete some of the, um, the recommendations, which includes streetscape improvements. We're applying for an MTF grant through DCED for almost 1.125 million. Um, and then we're committing 30% of the project, which is about, um, 481,000.
Do you have any questions for Valerie?
Yeah. A motion for approval.
I will move to approve the letter of support for New Cumberland Borough Streetscape Safety Improvements DCED Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant.
Seconded. Okay, so moved to seconded, no further questions, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Valerie, thank you commissioners. Move on then to agenda item 11, this is discussion and approval of a letter of support regarding the I-83 South Bridge Multimodal Project Discretionary Grant Application. And Kirk Soder was unavailable this morning, so I will be, um, standing in in his stead. And, uh, would just note that, as you know, the I-83 South Bridge, uh, is in, uh, is rated in poor condition, requires substantial, substantial updates to the tune of approximately $1 billion. And Pendot has been seeking grants and grants are essential for them to be able to move this project forward. Uh, I know there have been several updates to, to the support letter over the, the previous few days. Um, those updates have been to really just itemize the impacts to Cumberland County, um, if the, the South Bridge was either closed or lands were restricted. Do you have any questions about the, um, letter of support?
All right, so do we have, uh, motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve the letter of support. The I-83 South Bridge Multimodal Project Discretionary Grant Application, that's presented.
I second.
Okay, so moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you commissioners. Move on then to agenda item 12, which is discussion and approval of Resolution 2023-16, uh, which authorizes the joiner of Franklin County, uh, with the Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority. And we have Rich Far here to discuss.
Good morning. Uh, so just a little history, we have the Central Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, which, uh, the membership included Cumberland County, York, Adams, and Perry and Franklin. In that municipal authority, which, uh, was formed, you know, a while ago, um, Perry County and Franklin County, uh, provides only shared rights, so there's no local match requirement. So when we started the effort with SRTA, um, the, the, the formation committee determined that there's no local match. There's no seat at the board you have for representation. Franklin County now has service that requires local match. It's been operating, uh, uh, be almost a year now. Um, and so they are contributing local match and they've requested to be, uh, permitted to join the municipal authority. And so that's what this action will allow them.
Any questions for Rich on that matter?
So. Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve Resolution 2023-16 authorizing the joiner of Franklin County with the Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority.
Seconded. Okay, so moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Closely, yeah, closely related to that agenda item is the next agenda item, which relates to the Articles of Incorporation, specifically the amendment of the Articles of Incorporation, sorry.
Which really just gives Franklin County one vote.
Okay, any question? We have a, uh, motion for approval.
This, there's a typo on the title, there's an extra "and".
Well, thank you.
Material, but anyway, make a motion that we approve the amendment to the Articles of Incorporation, Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority, direction.
A second.
Okay, so moved and seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
May I just make one more comment or? Um, in front of you are some colorful, uh, flyers. Uh, we completed the first ever, uh, passenger survey in Cumberland County. 55 respondents is really low. I think it's combination of, you know, post-COVID and first time we've ever done this, but at least begins to have a baseline of data that we can build off from. You know, every year I create a, a management work plan that's approved by the Transit Authority Board of Directors. I use things like this, the findings in this to, to approve the services. So it's important to understand what the riders are thinking. And so there, there, on the backside, there are some, uh, things, you know, again, this is designed to be a dashboard, right? It's a really pretty in-depth survey, but there are scenarios for improvement. And we will begin looking at those as we develop next year, uh, finish the work plan. So we can, you know, at least make improvements. And the last thing I'm going to say is that I, I think I'm coming back next month. Um, the CAT Charter needs to be renewed. It's, it's up, so I'll be back to have that conversation. Appreciate your time this morning, please.
Thanks. Yeah.
We got a few things to do, right?
Yeah, we got a few things to do. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'm going to turn the meeting over now to Angela Sizer to work our way through the contract section. Thank you Stacy. Good morning, everybody. Moving on to agenda item 14, um, I see Kim McQuinn has joined us via Zoom. I will call on her, that's the contracts for AG Community Services. Good morning, Kim.
Hi, good morning commissioners. Uh, the contract or the agreement for Department of Agriculture is the plan to administer the state food purchase program. We will receive an allocation from the state, which I'll distribute to the food pantries in Cumberland County, uh, so that they can purchase food to distribute. Uh, the remaining contracts are all, uh, contracts for home health providers, uh, so that they can provide personal care and home support to our eligible options consumers. Any questions?
Excuse me. Sorry, good. Any additional?
I think she was just asking if you had any question.
What's for you?
So I will move to approve the contracts and grants for AG Community Services as set forth on the agenda at item 14.
Seconded. Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Moving on to agenda item 15, I will now call on Jamie Reiver to discuss the contracts for children. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Uh, the first one I have is Hemp Field Behavioral Health. Uh, this, uh, service provides multi-systemic therapy, um, for clients. Uh, they are requesting a 15% increase. This rate is actually set by Perform Care, whichever sees the behavioral health. Um, and this is only a temporary cost to the county. Um, once the insurance picks up and authorizes the service, um, the funding will flip to the insurance. Um, we're also adding three new, um, services to the contract. Uh, psychological testing, court testimony, and forensic evaluations, which will be used in order to substantiate any emotional abuse cases that we have. Uh, the next one I have is Family Centered Services. Uh, this is our family group. Janelle Carbaugh is also on there doing business as Family Centered Services, sorry. Um, this is our family group, um, provider. They are requesting an increase to their administrative cost, which is, um, go, is going directly to their facilitators and coordinators, um, and that is the only increase that they are requesting at this point. The next one is Appalachian Youth Services. Uh, they provide, uh, residential services for us. Um, they are requesting an increase of 19% um, due to staff ratios needing to hire more staff for overnight duty. Um, and because of having to close several of their locations. Uh, the next one is for kids piece. They provide shelter, residential, and foster care services. They are requesting significant increases this fiscal year. However, keep in mind that the services are split 80/20, 90/10, and 60/40 depending on, uh, the program between state and local funds. So the impact to the county is much less than this big numbers that you're seeing. Um, they are justifying these increases due to attracting and retaining high-quality associates. The inflation significantly affecting the cost of doing business, including food and shelter and clothing for the youth that they serve. And the last one is Bethany Home, they provide residential services. Uh, they also are requesting some significant increases, um, again, with the split being between the state and county. Um, they have increases in costs for salary and benefits. Um, they are, um, licensed as a specialized setting, uh, so that requires, um, special certification and ongoing cost to maintain that. Uh, they're accredited by the Joint Commission. Um, they also have increasing costs to meet their federal and state mandates. They are expanding their educational program and extracurricular activities this fiscal year. Um, and then overall rising operation classes we're all experiencing, um, is also part of why they're requesting the increases. Any questions?
Any questions for Jamie?
For a, uh, motion for approval.
Yeah, move to approve the contracts for children and youth listed.
A second.
Okay, so moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks.
Great, moving on to agenda item 16, I will call on Erin Lewis to discuss the grant acceptance for the District Attorney's Office slash CID.
Morning commissioners. Detective Erin Lewis, been with, uh, EA's office now for three years. This, uh, local law enforcement grant we're applying for pays my salary along with the salary of a ADA or subsidizes that salary. It also pays us to, uh, it funds us to help, uh, investigate all the illegal gambling that goes on throughout the county, um, where it could be from illegal lottery sales, uh, illegal online gaming, the skill games, um, Commonwealth estimates that, uh, they're losing over $200 billion a year just from illegal gaming that's going on throughout the state. And this grant will allow us to continue to, uh, investigate these, uh, instances that we see here in Cumberland County.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, so give a motion for approval.
I will move to approve, uh, game and control board, local law enforcement's grant acceptance of 145,421 dollars for the District Attorney's Office CID.
Seconded. Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 17, I will now call on Ryan, I'm going to discuss the contracts for drug and alcohol. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning. Uh, our first contract is with Pennsylvania Counseling Services. Uh, they are one of our outpatient providers. And as you'll remember from some of our other, uh, meetings, we've been increasing outpatient rates. The outpatient individual rate. So they have, um, outpatient for adults and outpatient for adolescents. We'd like to increase those. Second is White Deer Run. White Deer Run, uh, provides inpatient services. They have several different, uh, locations around the state. And they're asking for quite a range of increases. Um, on the larger increases, I did reach out to their, uh, fiscal staff and asked the, for some additional details on that. And the increases, uh, they were saying are due to salary staff or staff salary increases, uh, mainly in their nursing, um, positions. Uh, they've had trouble, uh, hiring, keeping, uh, nurses especially. And they've also had to offer incentives, uh, for certain shifts, uh, to get their staff to actually agree to work those shifts. Um, then third is, um, Family Health Council of Central PA. We're looking to amend that contract. Uh, we've received, uh, reinvestment funds from CAVHC, uh, for housing and, um, so we'd like to increase the, uh, contract by 106,783 dollars and 50 cents. Any questions?
We have a motion for approval.
Move to approve the contracts for drug and alcohol for Pennsylvania Counseling Services, White Deer Run L.C. And also to approve the addendum to the contract for Family Health Council of Central PA.
A second.
Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. Moving on to agenda item 18, we are joined by Aaron Bates to discuss the contract for IMTO.
Good morning commissioners. Uh, this Comcast contract is part of the capital project that just recently approved. This is, uh, going to be a redundant internet connection. In the event that our main internet connection fails or goes down for whatever reason, this new connection will pick up and, um, there'll be no downtime. Uh, this will handle VPN, uh, still allow the employees to remotely work, uh, as well as our DJ offices being able to come in, talk to us, as well as any public services that we offer to. Um, the contract is for 1,008 dollars and 35 cents, that's a monthly charge. Uh, it also includes a lock of static IPs that allows us to do what we need to do. Any questions?
One quick question. The, uh, so I mean, once in a while we see these news stories about some backhoe hit cable and, you know, it's down. So you're saying redundancy. Is this, is it a different cable coming from a different place? Is that?
It's a different cable, different provider, uh, different entrance point, things like that, yeah. And we have had that situation in the past where, uh, a cable's been cut on a, on a rail line and it's taking our internet down. Doesn't happen often, but when it does, it's, yeah, it's pretty impactful.
Okay, so there should help. Yes. All right, so we need, uh, motion for approval.
And we'll move to approve the Comcast contract for the IMTO office as discussed.
Seconded. Moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Moving on to agenda item 19, I will call on Annie Strick to discuss the contracts for MHIDB. Good morning, Annie.
Good morning. I have, uh, two contracts to present to the commissioners here. The first is actually for, uh, early intervention services. It's with, uh, UPMC Pinnacle. And it is for, um, diagnostic evaluations, occupational, physical, and speech therapies, and special instruction. Uh, it's a decrease from last year of 16,112 dollars. Total contract is 229,888 dollars. Um, the second contract is, uh, mental health provider. Um, it's actually our largest residential provider for, uh, adults with serious mental illness. Um, it's New Visions and we're requesting, they're requesting an increase of 377,000 dollars, uh, 377,637. And that brings their contract amount to 5,100,779 dollars. Um, do you have any questions?
We have a motion for approval.
Move to approve the contracts for MHIDB as presented.
A second.
Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Moving on to agenda item 20, I will now call on Stephanie Williams to discuss the grant application for planning. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning. Um, the planning department is seeking approval to submit a grant to the Appalachian Trail Conservancy, which manages the South Mountain Partnership. Uh, the grant is to make some enhancements to the Mount Holly Marsh Preserve. Um, a little bit of background on the Mount Holly Marsh Preserve. It was acquired in 1992 by the Nature Conservancy and then turned over to the county. Uh, it's about 900 acres total, 700 acres of woodland, 200 acres of sensitive, uh, wetland area. Uh, primary activities there are really just, uh, fishing and hiking. It's a passive area. Um, we're seeking funding to make some improvements to the signage there and to update a trail brochure. Total project cost is, uh, 14,500 dollars. The grant request would be for 7,250 dollars. And we propose that our matching funds would come from the act 13 dollars that we received and would not be requesting any general fund dollars to fund this project.
Any questions for Stephanie?
We have a motion for.
We'll move to approve the Appalachian Trail Conservancy's South Mountain Partnership Mini Grant Application of 7,250 dollars for planning.
Seconded. Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving on to agenda item 21, I will call on Claudia Garner to discuss the grant acceptance for public safety. Good morning, Claudia.
Good morning, everybody, and happy Thursday. Public Safety is requesting your approval to accept the grant agreement for the Radiation Emergency Response Fund, known as the RER grant, for state fiscal year 2324 in the amount of 21,489 dollars. And that has a performance period of July 1, 23 through June 30 of 24. This is state grant funding that provides, um, for the development and, uh, to maintain comprehensive emergency plans as they relate to the surrounding areas of Three Mile Island. While it has decommissioned, there is still, um, funding available to support any activity that, uh, we might, be encountered with because of that operation. This is a decrease of 1,715 dollars. I think there's a typo on the internal form for the approval process. Um, but the three-year average of this grant is 22,000 dollars, so it's right in line. If there are no questions, I'll ask for your motion to approve the acceptance of the 2324 RER grant funding. And this is in, uh, through the e-grant system. So upon your approval, I'll just need you to go into the system and, um, electronically sign, please.
Any questions? We have a motion for.
Move to approve the, uh, PMA Radiation Emergency Response Fund Grant Acceptance of 21,489 dollars.
A second.
Okay, so moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Claudia. Moving on to agenda item 22, I will call on Justin Miller to discuss the grant application for recycling waste. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, all. So this is the annual Act 101, uh, Recycling Performance Grant. This is strictly a rewards grant. It's for tonnages collected in the previous calendar year. Um, usually I help municipalities get data, uh, for their grant applications. However, sometimes we do, do get data at the county level. And then I submit, uh, those tons, uh, for this grant application. Based on the tonnage, um, from 2022, I'm estimating, uh, this grant would be 9,280 cents. And this is strictly a rewards grant.
Any questions for Justin?
Should I have one question? Now, does this, you know, the, the various haulers change the parameters of what's recyclable, what's not recyclable? Does that impact this, these, the gross number in any meaningful way?
It does, it, good question, Gary, yes. Um, we have seen, uh, a reduction in annual tonnages due to the elimination of some materials from the curbside programs. And, and in turn that lowers, or you could say hurts, um, some of the performance grant totals.
And that trend's been underway for a while.
Yes.
All right, we don't see any dramatic change in the works for that.
I, I don't, other than I think over the last couple of years, the, the markets have rebounded a little bit. Um, I, I don't know what the future holds, if they'll, uh, reinstate some of those materials. Um, that's, that's unknown.
Okay, all right, thanks for clarification.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for action.
I will move to approve the PAD, the Municipal Recycling Program Performance Grant Application of 9,208 dollars and 80 cents for the recycling and waste costs.
Seconded. Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 23, I will call on Stacy Smarter to discuss the contract for the Recovery. Thanks, Angela. So the, um, the contract for the Newville Borough Water and Sewer Authority for the Recovery Grant Program, um, has been processed through the, uh, Water and Sewer Authority did sign the contract. Uh, this is, uh, the standard contract with one change in section six of the contract with relates to how the local match is applied. And so they will be expected to pay out their local match in, in full prior to being eligible for the grant funds. And much like we did with, um, several of the other in, um, groups that were purchasing real estate, uh, they will include a provision in their invoice that would allow for payment of that invoice once they receive the check from, you know, for the project. Any questions?
Do we have a?
Move to approve the Newville Borough Water and Sewer Authority Contract Recovery Grant Program in the amount of 210,000.
A second.
Okay, moved to seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Moving on to agenda item 24, I will call on Lisa Grayson to discuss the contracts for Register of Wills. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning, thank you. Good morning commissioners. We have two contracts in front of you. I'll use, I'll do the first one, the easy one first. It is a scanning project to digitize and index marriage records from 1950 to 1976. We already have these records, uh, digitized and indexed from 76 to current. So it just extends the, um, the marriage records that we have, uh, digitized and, um, scanned in. And this will help us in meeting the needs for, uh, the real ID, the request for the, the certified copies of marriage licenses. It'll help, uh, get that, um, meet that need. The 27,000 dollars will be coming out of our automation fee, so it should be a, uh, net zero for the county. Any questions on that one?
Uh, we're too emotional.
I will move to approve the contract for the Register of Wills, uh, for Reynolds Business Systems and GOV OS County Fusion. G O V O S County Fusion.
Second. Move in second and all in favor to keep saying hi.
I think she had only discussed the Reynolds. Well, chopping up, I, I kind of feel like Lisa, you did such a fabulous job at the last meeting discussing both of these during the capital project discussions. I feel like we probably could have presented this for you. So do you have any comments about the second contract?
No, by all means, if you want to go ahead and just prove. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to go after Annie.
Thanks, Lisa. Alright, thank you, Lisa.
So no question to approve this one?
Yeah, they, they have got them both at the same time, so.
Wonderful, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
You could have said anything.
Alright, I will now hand the meeting back over to you. Thanks Angela. Uh, agenda item twenty-five is a discussion of bid results. For the N R C S grazing project and then a possible motion to award that project. And I'll call on Elizabeth Grant to discuss. Good morning.
Good morning. So we're seeking your approval to award um, the N R C S grazing projects, which were three. Uh, woven wire fencing projects to support rotational grazing prop, um, practices, best management practices on three area farms. It would install approximately twenty-three thousand linear feet of fencing posts and gates uh, to support this practice. The project um, is supported by funds through D E P's Countywide Action Plan Block Grant with a ten percent cost share. We received two bids. The lowest responsible bidder was Casey McGinnis Services LLC. In the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, one hundred and eighty-one, sorry, two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy cents. We're seeking your approval to forward notification to the lowest responsible bidder, execute agreements between the landowner and contractor. And receive all payment and performance bonds and other documentation required.
Any questions for Elizabeth?
Did we receive any documentation on this? I don't see any.
Uh, we, we typically do not receive um, that information. Uh, the contract itself typically isn't created by the solicitors, not the solicitor, please correct me if I'm wrong, until after the bid um. So is awarded.
I'll make a motion to award the N R C S grazing project to Casey McGinnis Services O L C. In the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand one eighty-one cents.
A second.
Okay, move in second and all in favor to keep saying hi.
Thank you, commissioners. That takes us then to, thank, thank you, Elizabeth. Um, that takes us then to agenda item twenty-six, which is commissioners lays on the courts. And I'll start by calling our commissioner, I.
Okay, just briefly, um, recycling is uh. Justin contacted me and they're, they're working through the final documents for secret H R G regarding our project at the recycling center. And uh, they're gonna be bringing it to us shortly. So stay tuned. Looking for some decisions on that in the very near future. Uh, on the M H side, we have M H I D V uh, citizen advisory board meeting is today. Uh, at noon, I'll be there, so. Nothing super new to report there. Of course, the big news is we don't have budget, so we're still in limbo. I think that's welcome to everybody. Couple of uh, ancillary items Annie wanted me to mention is the. R F P for the Regional Crisis Walking Center that we're doing cooperatively with Dalton County. That R F P went out on the eleventh. Tomorrow's the, I guess it's the pre-bid conference they're having with the potential contractors and uh. So that's moving forward. DHS did send the human services block grant planning document uh, just yesterday. And we're running the plan to be presented to the board, this board in September, and of course it's due in mid-September. So the advisory board is seeking new candidates. Um, and Sam, I don't know if you can talk to Annie at all about that, but maybe we can leverage some of the um. The public visibility we've achieved in the last few months regarding the budget, maybe we could use. You know, some of that as a means of reaching out to the interested folks who pay attention on that issue. And uh. See if we can recruit some interested individuals to serve on that budget, we're thinking it's a two-year term.
Just one?
Uh, I think it says new candidates, I, I seem to recall we do two at a time and it may be more, so you may want to touch base with Annie, but. Um, you know, they always put a notice out, but I think given what's been going on now, there may be more interested people out there. It's not like, we're uh, made some inroads, I think, with some folks who may want to get more involved. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pashin.
Well, good morning, Cumberland County. I would remind you to use the Cumberland County library system. Our summer reading programs are well underway. And before you know it, kids, it will be time to go back to school, so read the books and tally up your totals and. Go and wrap, get the raffle for your prizes. It's uh, it's pretty cool, pretty cool. My kids have always loved that. Um, the Western Cog met last Monday, um, and they are already working on their salt bid. And um, they had a couple of questions about the project twenty-five radios and uh. The Harris Motorola, uh, the, the ability to use uh, the county ARPA funds for Harris or Motorola radios or a combination of such. And I told them that of course, Pop Shively would be giving a letter out to them, so I know those things are well underway. Um, last week also, PennDOT had a meeting with electants regarding the Market Street Bridge update. Um, and the biggest piece on that bridge is that rather than the utilities being constructed on the bridge, as had been in prior plans. We're now going to construct a separate bridge. Next to the Market Street Bridge for the purpose of running utilities. And it will also be for pedestrians and bicycles. Um, and there's a lot of reasons for that. Including that it takes about four years off of construction time. Um, so I have a. Nice little handout if anyone wants to take a look at it. Um, the other thing that came out of that meeting is that the Market Street Bridge and the South Bridge will happen at the same time. So those two projects will be going on at the same time. And even though um, there will be a utility bridge happening there, it, none of that work will preclude the cat bridge from being used as bike pedals. So that, that was also good news. Um. The L E P C summit is on October nineteenth. The theme is protecting your assets and that will be held at the Army Heritage Education Center. Uh, C C A P, the Complex Cases Task Force, we met for our first meeting on Monday. The state came in, they talked about the work that they're doing regarding complex cases with children. Um, the task force. Uh, also talked about their work in the next six months. Um, but one of the things that really came out of that meeting is that there's a real definition of complex case, which that need. So that, that's something that we'll be working on. Uh, planning that this morning. And. So I'll just give you some interesting facts here while I pull my agenda out of everything. So um, in twenty-twenty-three, um. From January to June, we've got our residential building permits, so there's five hundred and twenty-five total units. These are constructed units. Um, same timeframe, January to June, there were eleven commercial units and zero new industrial units. And on this non-residential building summary, this is a total commercial value of sixteen million two hundred and ninety-five thousand four hundred dollars. See, so there was an A S A review of the Asper property in Southampton Township, uh, that was uh, approved. The, there was a very vigorous discussion about the Cumberland County Comprehensive Plan Survey. Of course, the county is undergoing. Uh, the work of putting together a new comprehensive plan. There will be a survey coming out. Uh, that will be brought to the commissioners. All those questions will be brought to the commissioners for review before that survey goes out. Uh, the Cumberland Plan's Grant Applications, Mechanicsburg Borough, uh, their request um. For funds to assist with their comprehensive plan has, was, that was approved. Um, and that would be twenty thousand dollars uh, for Cumberland County and then a match to mechanics verbal match at twenty thousand dollars. And West Pensboro Township is doing a new zoning ordinance, um, and they've asked for twenty-five thousand dollars for a total of fifty-five thousand dollars on that project. And uh, there was a lot of conversation about how. Both of those projects really need to be publicly open and highly visible processes. So there was a lot of conversation about how do you get the public really engaged in things. Also, you know, talked about social media and Mechanicsburg, they talked about actually knocking on doors to make sure that people know that there's a survey out there and that their input. Is really and truly needed. And about that time, I happily leave the meeting to be here, so um. Hampton Township is doing an update of flood plan, plane regulations, Newville Borough is doing zoning amendments. Upper Allen Township is doing two zoning ordinance amendments, one regulating daycares and one regulating signs. Um, and that's, that's what I have this morning. Thank you. Thanks. Commissioner people.
Yes, uh, CATCAG did not meet in July, they re- convened in August. Uh, there was to be applied in priority investment forum meeting last week, but we did not have a quorum. The Ag Board met on July twelfth and right now the board, as they do every year, take a look at the program guidelines. And uh, they're uh, looking in particular at guideline that defines construction replacement house on a reserve farm. And also the actual subdivision of reserve plan. On reserve farms, there is a housing redevelopment authority meeting at noon today, which I'll be attending. That's all I have, Stacy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, moving on to agenda item twenty-seven, I'd like to report that an executive, executive session. Was held on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at nine thirty A M regarding personnel. And I'll ask if any other business needs to come before the board today. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, we are adjourned.